Thank you. I'd like to call the March 18, 2020 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when you're not speaking as this is a conference call, and state your name prior to making a comment, a motion, or a second on an action item. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask that each Commissioner please respond with "here" when I call out his name. Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bagnall, I'm here. So let's start with the agenda, and the first thing we have is the reports by the CEO and the management staff.
Hi. So, thank you. This is Tom Hitman. So I just wanted to really give a rundown of what we've been dealing with with this coronavirus here for the past couple of weeks, but in the last week, this has really intensified a lot for all of us here. So one of the things that we have done is we have now set up and have a standing IC structure, incident command structure. So that is now stood up. It is in the early stages of being operational, and that is really designed, for those that aren't familiar, it's really designed to be super flexible. So as conditions and things change, we can be very responsive. I will tell you that we've set this up to be really focused on resource needs in terms of keeping the water flowing and keeping the operational units adequately staffed. So that's where we focused with the incident command structure. We've been doing daily reports, actually been doing reports twice a day as new information has been made available to us by the state and federal governments in response to this. So we were in line with all of that. We've also been working with our partner agencies on all of this. The other thing, one of the other things that we've spent a great deal of effort on is instituting a work from home policy. We went from a week ago of making it an option for staff to work from home to now requiring them to work from home. So any staff that is capable of working from home, they must work from home. So we've been getting that up and running. At this point, as of this morning, I believe we had about 48 staff members that were working remotely, and some minor hiccups with our IT stuff in making that happen. But for the most part, it's been a pretty smooth transition getting everybody to that point. The other thing that we are working on, and this is really now starting today and heading into next week, we are setting up for employees who can't work from home, we're setting up shift schedules. And all of this is set up with the intent to maximize social distance. So Kerry's been working on looking at what her options are for setting up different shift schedules so that we maximize distance, minimize contact between employees. We are also working out details of pay to ensure employees continue to get paid. One of the things that, this is one of those issues I would love a little feedback from the entire Board on. I'm trying to set up, working with staff here, a policy that ensures employees continue to get paid for at least the next 30 days. And so we're doing that through creating a leave bank and basically saying for staff that doesn't have the ability to work from home, can't come in because of the way we have things set up, that we would allow them to utilize an additional 80 hours of a leave bank in addition to anything else they have already set up and reserved. So I'm going to pause there. There's more here that we've been doing, but I would like to pause there because I would like some feedback from the Board on us taking that kind of action.
This is Jim Duggan. I think it's a great idea. You know, if it gets to the point that we've got a lot of people taking 80, then we need to revisit it and perhaps increase the number.
Hi. This is Commissioner Bagnall. I concur.
Yeah, this is Dick. And this situation is unprecedented, and I don't want to see anyone not being able to pay their mortgage, and food, et cetera.
So we are, just so you know, I appreciate that. Commissioner Sanders, did you want to? And Commissioner Duggan?
There's nothing more to be said. Everybody's saying the right thing. We are committed to the employees of TVWD.
Ditto for me too, Jim Duggan.
Okay. So we're working that, those details out to make sure that that continues to happen. And as those reserves, if they begin to dwindle, or this incident continues to drag on, we will certainly be letting the Board know the situation before we get to a point that we would normally do, which our normal policy says, we would begin instituting layoffs within our five days after this kind of an event. So we are definitely outside our normal policy on this, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. And then we are also, we have officially, we've shut down the front counter, the, actually the building to the public, very limited access for anybody outside of the skeleton staff that we have on site. So we've set up alternate methods for people to pay. So we've done a number, we've looked at all of the things that brought the public into the front counter, all of the business processes, and made modifications so that people could still do business without having to come in. So we no longer have front counter staff that can get exposed to the general public on this.
Yeah. This is Dick. I think we may have some opportunity here on that Chehalis website that they may be concerned about everything else, but don't be concerned about water because we're good.
Oh, yeah. So I think that Andrea and her team are working on putting up some communication messages that we've, just in the last 24 hours, my understanding is, I think CNN ran a segment about, some guy got on there saying how this virus could be transmitted through drinking water, and it got a lot of people scared. So yeah, we are trying to message as loudly as possible through all of our social websites to let the public know the water is absolutely safe to drink, and we continue to provide it. So yes, we are definitely working on it.
I think the Nextdoor site is one of our best outreach sites. That stuff travels like wildfire. So that'd be a good place to post it.
All right.
Yeah.
And then the other thing that we've done, just again, this is more informational, we are no longer shutting off water for non-pay, but we have set up alternate process to reach out to customers who find themselves unable to pay instead of shut-off. So in other words, we didn't want to just go dark. If somebody would reach the normal point at which they would get a notice of shut-off, we are now reaching out to them through the phone to talk to them about seeing how we could help them out. We have also established new office policies, maximizing spacing between staff and shifting to remote meetings. So almost every single meeting, at least on my calendar, has now been shifted to remote meetings, and we're discouraging any face-to-face meetings unless they are time-sensitive and absolutely required, that there's no way to share the information virtually.
Yeah. You know, this is Dick. Ever since my stem cell transplant about 10 years ago for multiple myeloma, I have been hyper-aware of, since my immune system is compromised, I've been hyper-aware in public about people coughing, et cetera, and I ran the other way if somebody did. And this is unprecedented. I mean, you know, when people can transmit this virus before they even have any idea that they have it is just amazing.
Yeah. You know, that's the concern here is been getting new information here just in the last 24 hours that there are people out there that show almost no symptoms at all, and yet are highly contagious. So it's definitely, it's a pretty scary thing for anybody with any kind of compromised immunity. We are still working out bugs with some of the remote meetings, but the amount of kinks we've improved here just in the last 24 hours is getting much, much better, getting smoother of how to do this. So it's improving. And as I mentioned before, we're coordinating with regional partners, and one of the things that we've just made our regional partners aware of is just the concern, should some of our smaller water purveyors in the region here with very small and limited staff, should they start losing staff, we're in a spot that we can lend aid and help them keep the water flowing. So we're probably in one of the best positions to be able to do that. In fact, Kerry Pack even reached out, I believe, yesterday to form a water bureau and offered assistance there should they need it. So we've really working hard to make sure that the entire region is safe. We are working on a number of other things as well, but all of this, the other things, some of the other things that we worked on is how we're tracking all the costs associated with this. We are now have separate codes for tracking our hours that we're spending on this because when this is all said and done, we will be doing some type of post-mortem on our, what we've done here to understand what we did right, what we could have improved on, and what the costs were involved, total. And that also sets us up, should any federal dollars be made available for reimbursement for this event, it puts us in a spot that we can actually apply for those and know what kind of dollars we have spent here in the process of going through this.
Cool.
So that is a short snippet, but that has literally consumed a good chunk of the leadership team's time here over the past week and even during the weekend. Many of us were working on this as this information changed. Is there any other questions by the Board on any of this?
Well, we really, I'm sure I speak for everybody, that we really appreciate how much you've been through over the past week especially. It seems like the situation changes hourly. It's really amazing.
You know, I got to say, once again, the team here has just been astounding. The amount of people stepping up, willing to step up, has been fantastic. We are, the other thing I should have mentioned, we are encouraging staff, basically, to recognize that this is an opportunity for all of us to give back to our community. You know, our communities pay our salaries, and this is an opportunity for us to give back. So been encouraging staff to do takeout from small businesses, anything we can to help keep, you know, some money flowing to some of these other private businesses that are heavily impacted by this, trying to do that. And here in the, probably in the coming week, we're going to really be encouraging people to volunteer if they, if it's safe and they feel healthy, because you've got places like Meals on Wheels who, they're running out of volunteers, simply because a lot of the volunteers for these organizations are retired folks that can't risk exposure. So we're trying to step up in our communities to give back here, and we're certainly encouraging our employees to do that as we move forward. The only other piece of information along with all this that I think you're all aware of, but just in case you're not, AWWA Pacific Northwest section has officially canceled its spring conference. So as has every conference I was aware of now, pretty much through May, every single conference has been canceled. We'll see if this gets under control to allow for the eighth conference or not. That's out in June. We'll just have to see how well we do getting this under control in the next couple of months to make that call. But right now, we're saying no travel for any of the TVWD staff for the next eight weeks. So that's where things stand. Unless there's any other questions, that's what I have.
No questions here, Dick?
Nope. No questions. Do we, do we have a safety minute tonight, or do we not?
Uh, we do. Am I on for this? Oh, Dave, it's Dave's.
Yeah, I think you passed it on to me, Tom.
All right, sorry. Yes.
Okay, off we go. So Commissioners, I've got a very brief safety minute and department report for you tonight, so let's get into it. And the safety moment is to help flatten the curve and stay out of the hospital. So in case you're unaware, if you've been living in a cave, flattening the curve refers to keeping the number of new cases, particularly of this disease, to a manageable level so that our healthcare system can manage it. And the Centers for Disease Control has come up with a list of ways to go about doing that, and we've all heard this multiple times, but it's worth repeating, and they're really simple. Avoid exposure, so do the social distancing thing, which is exactly what we're doing tonight. Clean your hands often. Stop touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. Stay home if you're sick. Cover your coughs and sneezes with a tissue if you have it, and throw the tissue away immediately, or with the inside of your elbow if you don't have a tissue. Wear a face mask if you're sick or caring for somebody who's sick, and then clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. So these are all the things that the CDC is recommending that we do all the time now to, again, flatten the curve. But another thing I think we should take into account is there's just regular things that perhaps we should be thinking about a little bit as well to keep ourselves out of the hospital. And if you do a little Google searching to figure out, you know, what are the most typical reasons people go to the hospital, you find out that it's falls, that people falling is one of the most often cases that people end up in the hospital. And so we want to avoid fall. So stay off the ladder. Remove and replace in those loose floor mats and other trip hazards around your house. And exercise carefully, and eat well so you can maintain your balance, so that you can maintain your upright posture. Driving safely is probably another thing that we want to do. So to do so, give yourself more time to get where you want to go, and be even more vigilant of your surroundings and the other cars around you. And if you have to go to the hospital, consider an urgent care center rather than the emergency room. They're all going to be very busy coming up, going forward on this thing. So again, to help flatten the curve instead of the hospital, follow the CDC guidelines to avoid the virus. Go to the hospital if necessary, but take extra measures to avoid it when possible and preserve our medical system capacity. And we are going to get through this together. That concludes the safety moment. I'm going to continue on now with the Water Supply Program Department report. So clicking over to the next slide is the outline of that brief update in advance of our regular work session update. So you know, Commissioners, each work session at the beginning of the month, they present a detailed review of what's going on in the program. So for this presentation, I'll cover a few things that I typically don't get into, and I'll also keep it pretty brief. I'll talk about our key accomplishments, our right-of-way updates, permitting activities, and then just a quick look ahead to what's coming up in the work session. So going on to the next slide, our key accomplishment and focus areas. On the upper left there is our procurement. We have a lot going on in the procurements on the program. We are bidding our PLW 1.3 construction project. We are getting our guaranteed maximum price on our raw water facilities project. We are processing a change order for our PLM 1.2 project, which is the day road crossing at the north part of the city of Wilsonville. We are processing a design scope and fee amendment for our water tuba plant design contract, and we are working on our CMGC delivery exemption for a reservoir project. Our rebase lining continues. This is something that we always work on in the beginning of the year, and this one, it's taken a little bit longer because we're working through some cost management strategies, but we're anticipating bringing that to the WWSS Commission Board at the beginning of May. We're advancing designs of many projects listed here, eight pipeline projects, our treatment plant project, our reservoir project, and our DCS, that's our Distributed Control System. Over on the right-hand side, you're seeing we're coordinating multiple projects with outside entities, with the city of Wilsonville, with Washington County Land Use and Transportation, with various developers along PLM 5.2 in South Hillsboro, and with the Oregon Department of Transportation. Constructing pipelines, we have four projects still in construction, PLMs 1.1 and 1.2, 5.1 and 5.2, and we're progressing planning. So our commissioning has started planning, our operations planning, and our water supply integration planning. Moving on to the next page, our right-of-way updates. I won't go into these in detail, but there are five projects right now that we have active right-of-way efforts underway. Our PLW 1.3 project, that's in South Hillsboro, we're making good progress on the property acquisitions there. And our PLM 5.2 project along Shoals Ferry and Tao Flat, we have one more property that we're acquiring there, and we're making excellent progress on that. PLM 4.3 project on Roy Rogers Road, we're going to be, we're nearing 60% complete on the design on that project, and so in June, we plan to come with a resolution of need for property for that project. Our PLM 1.2 project, that was the change order to get across Day Road, couple of property acquisitions there. And on our Metzger Pipeline East project, that one as well, we're getting to 60% complete design, and we're ready to, are getting ready for a resolution of need for that project. Clicking on to the next slide, recent activities on our permits and applications. Two projects with lots of permit activity over the last month or so, PLW 1.3 project, that's the project that we're currently advertising for construction in South Hillsboro. You can see the various permitting activities there. US Fish and Wildlife Service for a migratory bird depredation permit, Clean Water Services with our service letter modification, and a wildlife salvage permit with ODFW that we're expecting in May. On our raw water facility project, as we're heading towards beginning construction on that one this summer, a couple of permit activities on that one regarding submitting our application for use of right-of-way with the Botanical Power Administration. And we also submitted for a 1200C application to the Department of Environmental Quality. And actually, just today, we got that approval from DEQ. So we anticipated that approval in April, but actually, we got that sooner than we anticipated. So good news. The next page is upcoming permit applications and approvals. Don't worry, I'm not going to go through all of these. This is just to give you an idea of kind of the vast amount of permitting activity that's occurring on the program, and this is frankly, just a one-month look ahead. If we continue this on for a couple of months, it would be even more dense. But with all the activity that we're going processing through design and heading towards construction, there's just a lot of permitting activity occurring on the program. Clicking on to the last slide of my presentation, a look ahead to our April 7 work session update that will cover the usual topics. The first element of that presentation will be a review of the April WWSS Commission Board meeting agenda. Just to give you, let you know, we will have three action items for the WWSS Board at that meeting. We are making some minor clarifications to our management authority matrix. The second action item will be a resolution of necessity for property along our Metzger Pipeline East project. And then the third action will be the change order for the Day Road Crossing on our pipeline project in north side of Wilsonville. And then we'll also talk about our approvals and our procurement forecasts, and update on WWSSP activities, which of course, will include a lot of photos of the construction that's occurring. And Commissioner Sanders, I'll have lots of more erratics to show you, big piles of erratics to talk about at that presentation. And that concludes my department report.
Thank you, Dave. Are there questions from Commissioners?
This is Dick. Not here.
All right. Moving along in that case, thank you both, Dave and Tom, for your reports. Moving to Commissioner Communications and reports of meetings attended. I will start to my virtual right with Commissioner Sanders.
Very nice. Thank you. I only have two meetings to report, which was our usual beginning of the month work session where we talked about the WWSS, and then today's meeting.
Thank you. Continuing on my virtual right, Commissioner Schmidt, your meetings attended.
Let's make it mine together and I'll get right back.
In that case, we will move across to Commissioner Doan. Are you prepared?
Yes. Oh, my. I'm going to be excited. I can't wait for you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Doan, your voice is really muffled. I'm having trouble understanding.
Oh, sorry. I attended the work session and tonight's meeting. Is that okay?
Thank you. That was perfect. Commissioner Duggan?
I have four meeting days to report. On the 3rd of March, attended our Board Executives and Work Sessions where we received an update on WWSS and the Grab Horn Reservoir Project. On the 5th, I attended the regular WWSS meeting. On the 17th, we had a special WWSS Board meeting to discuss property acquisition and authorizing the project manager, program manager, to negotiate for property acquisition, easement acquisition. As well, yesterday, there was a meeting, a TVWD Finance Committee meeting where we received WWSS. uh, WWSS and CIP cost updates, and then tonight's, uh, meeting as well. That's it.
Okay, this is Dick. Uh, besides the work session, I have nothing except tonight's board meeting.
I'm not sure about that. I think you also met with me and the CEO for agenda planning on the 10th.
That's right, I did. I still have that on my, uh, on my phone.
Well, add that to your, add that to your list, and then we're good.
Okay.
So for my meetings attended, I went to the, I attended the Utility Management Conference. Actually, Commissioner Schmidt was at that one too, for board education. And then on the 3rd, we had the Board Work Session, like everybody said, with the Willamette Water Supply System update and the Grabhorn Project completion update. On the 10th, I met with the CEO and Commissioner Schmidt for agenda planning. On the 17th, we had the Finance Committee meeting, which Commissioner Duggan already mentioned, to talk about updates on, uh, rate impacts of the WWSS and the CIP, any CIP potential changes, and then tonight's meeting with regular district business. So are there any other topics that commissioners need to be raised?
This is Dick, not here.
I was going to raise the issue about taking care of our employees, but, uh, but Tom has done something that went further than what I was going to suggest, so I think this is just great.
Excellent. All right. Public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the Board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will also be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any person who would like to comment at this time?
Sure, I would. This is David Schmidt, Commissioner Bagnall.
Okay. Um, it, every, every person doing public comment is limited to five minutes unless an extension is granted by the Board. So go ahead, David.
Thank you. I want to say thanks to the commissioners and staff for their wisdom and leadership during these interesting times. That's all.
Well, you certainly stayed within your five minutes. And thank you very much for that. We appreciate hearing that. Moving now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any Board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the Board has approved the items, which do not require further discussion. Tonight, we have two items on the consent agenda, and Item A is to approve the February 19th, 2020, regular meeting minutes, and Item B is to approve the March 3rd, 2020 work session meeting. Do I have a motion, oh, do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Jim Doan, no moves.
This is Dick, I second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Doan and a second by Commissioner Schmidt. So, um, Debbie, if you will call the roll to vote on this?
Okay, please just state yes or no after I call your name. Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Well, I don't suppose I need to ask if any oppose, since I heard five yeses, so the motion passes unanimously. Moving to the business agenda. Item A, Item 2A, consider adopting Resolution 05-20, which is a resolution revising the other service charges for the Tuolatin Valley Water District with an effective date of May 1st, 2020. We'll have a staff report from CFO Paul Matthews.
Good evening, Commissioner Bagnall, and, uh, President Bagnall and commissioners. Uh, so now we're going to revisit something that we did, uh, present to you at the regular Board meeting, that's an update to our other service charges and penalties. Uh, moving on to, uh, Slide 14 in your slide deck, if you have your handouts in the lower right-hand corner, they are numbered, and this is titled, uh, Hydrant Permit Fees with the number 14 at the bottom. So the proposal that we have, which is consistent with what we presented last month, is to revise the truck sizes to better reflect the usage of our, uh, hydrant, uh, permit fee users. We're going to maintain the current charging method for Clean Water Services that works within their system, and we're establishing an effective date of May 1st, 2020. Uh, we did have an outreach plan, uh, we had an open house on January 30th, and, uh, actually we had no, uh, no customers attend that, but nevertheless, we did have, uh, an open house made available, uh, to our hydrant customers. In addition to that, uh, we had an information presentation to, to use the Board at a public, uh, meeting during your February regular, regular meeting. Uh, the district, uh, rates and fees are adopted by resolution. A few years back, uh, based on the recommendation of the Rate Advisory Committee, we actually split it into two exhibits, uh, attached to the resolution adopting the rates. Exhibit A contains the water rates, Exhibit B contains the other service charges and penalties. And as I mentioned, this is based on the recommendation of the Rate Advisory Committee, where they recommended that we adopt the water rates on a biennial basis. We wanted to maintain separation in the event that we wanted to change the other service charge and fees in the middle of the biennial, which is what we're proposing to do now. Uh, presented here on Slide 16 is, uh, the, uh, a comparison of what is in the current Exhibit B versus what we are proposing to, to have in the new Exhibit B. Essentially, uh, we are adding a new tank capacity size, smaller than 500 gallons, uh, and we're adding an additional, uh, tank size from 500 to 1500, larger than 1500 to 3,000, and anything larger than 3,000. And we're also making clear that that's a 12-month fire hydrant permit fee. Uh, and then that, that would include the actual water as well as the permit fee itself. In addition to that change, moving on to, uh, Slide 17, uh, we make it explicit, uh, the Clean Water Services, for them, we have, uh, permit fee plus water bill x the block one rate. It's important to remember that, uh, the current methodology, or the methodology we have prior to this was based on our system where our water haulers would declare the number of loads they have, and we would impute from that their water consumption. Working with Clean Water Services, they prefer that approach, and they're a very reliable partner in this regard. They're very, very reliable in reporting their usage on a regular basis, and they have a, a system, uh, within their, their work processes that accurately reports these things. So in conversations with them, uh, we have, uh, decided to keep them with, uh, the system that they prefer. With that, uh, answer any questions that, uh, you might have. Staff recommends the adoption of the proposed resolution to update the other service charges and penalties.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, since we did go over this at a previous work session and, and had questions and answers at that time, I don't suppose there are too many questions from the Board, but are there?
Not here.
All right.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to move. This is Commissioner Duggan, I'd like to, uh, move to adopt Resolution 0520, a resolution revising the other service charges for the Tuolatin Valley Water District with an effective date of May 1st, 2020, as presented by staff.
This is Dick, second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Duggan and seconded by Commissioner Schmidt to adopt this resolution. So if Debbie, if you will call the roll, and people please respond by saying yes or no.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
I heard five yeses, so I'm assuming that means there is no opposed, and the message, the motion passes. Item 2B, consider adopting Resolution 06-20, which is a resolution approving an emergency water supply contract between the Tuolatin Valley Water District, the City of Portland, and the City of Hillsborough. Uh, the staff report from this one is from Chief Legal Counsel Clark Balfour.
Uh, thank you, President Bagnall, commissioners. So, um, this is, this is really, um, I guess memorializing something that, that we've always cooperated on in the past. I mean, Tuolatin Valley has always been in the position of helping its neighbors and trying to accommodate with them in terms of how to move water in order to, um, keep people, other people in water during times of emergency. Uh, City Hillsborough, as we all know, gets, uh, their supply from the Joint Water Commission. They are our partners now in the Willamette, but, uh, the city, and I think prudently, decided they needed an emergency supply contract with the City of Portland to bridge this gap between now and 2026, when the Willamette will be online. Uh, so to that end, we, um, entered into discussions with Representatives of Portland Water Bureau, as well as Hillsborough, to work out this agreement that's in your packet tonight, which essentially provides for Portland and TDWD to provide up to 10 million gallons a day in certain emergency situations, and assuming that our systems are capable of delivering it, and there is supply to do that. Uh, Hillsborough will pay Portland a, an agreed-upon rate, uh, and they will pay us a wheeling charge that, that's been calculated based on a, um, I would guess I would say it's a blending of our cost to deliver water in our system at the 435 elevation level. So, um, so we, we essentially took a uniform cost across our entire system, rather than try to identify this piece of pipe up Walker and that piece of pipe up 185th, and, and how, you know, isolating those assets to come up with a wheeling charge. Uh, so, uh, the, the examples of when this agreement would be triggered would be a declaration of emergency by Hillsborough, when the JWC plant is incapacitated, when, uh, raw water's unavailable because of untreatable contamination, uh, the North Transmission Line and the South Transmission Line are disrupted, or some other urgent and unforeseen event. And we specifically say in the agreement that the, that growth in demand or the failure to plan does not constitute an emergency. Uh, so we think this is a good agreement. I think, um, this took some, this took some time to negotiate because Portland had some competing, uh, considerations in terms of if we're going to do an emergency contract for a non-wholesale contract holder, then what does that mean for everybody else, and what does that mean for other, uh, non-contract holders as well? Because there are folks on the east side who are interested in this as well. So I think Portland has probably landed on something that is probably getting closer, let's put it that way. Paul's, Paul's wincing here as I'm saying this, um, is getting closer to that uniform, um, emergency contract that Portland's looking for, but maybe it's not completely there. But for the next six years, this should work just fine, and probably, I, I mean, I guess I should knock on wood or something, but, you know, the, the events are fairly narrow, and so, um, we have now knocked on wood officially here as staff, and we hope it goes through. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Are there questions from the Board?
This is Dick, not here.
All right. If that, since I'm not hearing any other questions, then, uh, do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 06-20, a resolution approving an emergency water contract supply, water, emergency water supply contract between Tuolatin Valley Water District, City of Portland, and the City of Hillsborough?
This is Jim.
Dick?
This is Jim.
I heard a motion. So I think I heard a motion from Commissioner Schmidt and a second from Commissioner Doan.
That's correct.
All right. Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. Once again, that sounded unanimous, so I assume there are no opposed, and the motion passes. Moving to Item 2C, consider, while acting as the local contract review board, adopting Resolution 07-20, granting the public contracting officer emergency contracting powers to prepare for, prevent, and mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 coronavirus. And the staff report will come from Legal Counsel Clark Balfour.
Thank you again. So, um, as, as stated, this is a, the, a follow-on really to the comments that the CEO made earlier regarding our efforts to, to respond to the COVID-19, uh, emergency. And so we really have two things on your agenda here tonight. Uh, one is, uh, this resolution with you acting in your capacity as the local contract review board to, um, essentially modify the rules and, and delegate to the CEO, or in this case, under our rules, he is the public contracting officer, the PCO, uh, the ability to anticipate and enter into contracts, uh, on, on an emergency basis, because going through our typical bid and solicitation processes, uh, probably would not allow us to obtain the goods and services that we need on a quick basis in order to be prepared. Something as simple as, um, uh, sanitation products, uh, wipes, those kinds of things, or, uh, for example, a, to have maybe an institutional, um, service cleaning agency on call so that we could have them here on a moment's notice and not be calling them, uh, inquiring for their services when they're already tied up by others. So this is really just the opportunity to give Tom ability to anticipate and enter into contract processes, uh, as he deemed fit in order to be prepared for the emergencies that we may face, uh, with the caveat that he is to report to the Board at the earliest reasonable opportunity. And with that, I would, uh, entertain any questions.
Are there questions from the Board?
Well, this is Dick. I, it's a great idea. Uh, I don't see any problem with it whatsoever.
I, I would agree. So in that case, do I have a motion and a second to, as acting as the local contract review board, adopt Resolution 07-20, granting the public contracting officer emergency contracting powers to prepare for, prevent, and mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 coronavirus?
Uh, this is Jim Duggan, I so move as presented.
I second. Todd Sanders?
So it's been moved by Commissioner Duggan, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Uh, Debbie, the district recorder, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Another unanimous motion passes. Moving to Item 2D, which is related. Consider adopting Resolution 08-20, a resolution declaring an emergency and granting the chief executive officer emergency powers to prepare for, prevent, and mitigate the event, the effect of COVID-19 in conjunction with federal, state, and local public health officials and emergency management officials. And, uh, we'll have a staff report on this one, I'm guessing from Clark?
Yes. I'm on a roll, so I should continue. Um, so th- this is the other side of the coin we just talked about. This is you acting in your capacity as the Board of Commissioners for the district to take broader action and to, uh, one, declare an emergency and authorize, uh, Tom as the CEO to, uh, take those actions necessary to, uh, on a broader scale to prevent, mitigate, prepare for, all of those things that we talked about earlier. And it essentially comes in a couple of ways. Number one, uh, we want to do this from the standpoint, as Tom mentioned earlier in his report, um, general manager, or CEO report, that, that we would, um, do what's necessary in cooperation with, with public health and emergency management officials. in cooperation with, with public health and emergency management officials, um, because there's been declarations of emergency at the federal, state, and local level, and we want to cooperate with those folks in order to continue to deliver potable water to our citizens, protect the public health, protect our workforce, and, uh, and to keep, keep the water flowing essentially. So, with that, comes the power, and we're asking you to grant this power, so that he can interact with those officials and perhaps set us up for reimbursement if that opportunity presents itself, if we identify eligible costs. The other part of it, though, is, is broader things, just to do what is necessary, once again, to protect the public, the district workforce, and our property from, uh, the effects of this, uh, situation that we're facing. And you've already heard some of those things tonight in terms of adjustment of the workplace and, and staffing and incident command structures and those sorts of things. And in fact, there's a couple of things that we've already done, as Tom reported earlier, and so part of this resolution also acts as ratification of those, uh, prior acts. So, with that, I'm available, or we're all available, to answer any questions, but we'd ask that you adopt this resolution, which will, uh, follow and, and be coterminous with, uh, any of the other declarations of emergency by the federal, state, and Washington County officials. So, uh, there's no sunset clause built in, other than what those entities do, and we're going to track along with them.
Well, I have two questions. First is, what the heck does coterminous mean? And the second is, does this enable us to participate in ORWRON, or did we already have that ability to participate without declaring an emergency?
Uh, I'll take that ORWRON question first. We're already authorized to participate in ORWRON, emergency or not. That is a, that is a mutual cooperation agreement that, um, doesn't mean that it has to be an emergency on our part, it can be an emergency on someone else's part, and we respond to it. So, the, the ORWRON authority is always there, and in fact, will be used. Uh, coterminous, you're right. Uh, it's a word that I like. It usually goes with, with boundaries, uh, in real property descriptions, so I should probably say that, that the term of this declaration is tied to the term declared by the other authorities that I mentioned.
Yeah, I just want to know if I can ever use that in a sentence, and I'm, I'm kind of thinking, no.
Well...
On the note of it, I'll write it into something for...
I, I think if you want to explore new boundaries, you're absolutely free to do so.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And thank you for your report. Are there other questions from staff? Or from Board members? Pardon me. Okay, not hearing questions. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 08-20, a resolution declaring an emergency and granting the chief executive officer emergency powers to prepare for, prevent, and mitigate the effects of COVID-19 in conjunction with federal, state, and local public health officials and emergency management officials?
So, move, this is Jim Don.
Second, Todd Sanders.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Don and a second from Commissioner Sanders to adopt this resolution. Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That sounded unanimous, so the motion passes. And Tom, I just want to say, we have a very powerful CEO now. These are vast powers.
I, I, I will be respectful. I, I will make no comparison to the emergency declaration and the need for a, a new Jaguar, so...
Right. Use your powers only for good.
Yeah.
So, so, the last item on the agenda is an informational presentation on the local contract review board rules update. And my goodness, it's like the All Clark Show tonight.
I'm, I think I'm getting fatigued, but I'll try to soldier through. So, um, this is a preview of things to come. It's not as exciting as the preview of things to come that...
Is now exiting.
It's not as, um, exciting as Dave Kraska's preview of things to come, but we can, uh, we just...
Well, obviously Norm did not think it was exciting. He just exited the call.
Exactly. Well, I rehearsed it on him earlier today, so maybe he'd heard it. Um, that, no, I'm kidding on that. Anyway, uh, so what we have is, uh, this is something, this preview is something we would normally bring to you in a work session. Um, we canceled a work session, but, uh, we're trying to get some of these things behind us, and so we thought if we at least presented you a, a quick overview tonight, then when you saw this at your April 15th meeting, it wouldn't be, um, starting from ground zero. So, just by way of quick background, um, you already took action earlier tonight as local contract review board, and that's something that you have the power to, uh, appoint yourselves as, by statute, and actually, it's something that, that the previous board did back in the mid-1980s. And since then, we've had local contract review board rules, which, which, um, uh, establish how we go about our purchasing in accordance with state law. Um, we periodically update these. We did a significant rewrite of them in 2003 and 2005, when the state public contracting code changed. We've had some periodic amendments since then, but as we've, we're starting to review these at the, uh, beginning of the new year, we thought we needed to do a few things to tune up. And that's what we'll be presenting to you in April, and the, the general categories will be, we want to make sure that we have fine-tuned our alternate delivery methods. So, as you know, we've, there's always the traditional design, bid, build model, but we've also used construction manager, general contractor, and we've used design, build, and some other things. And we want to make sure that we've, um, fully outlined our processes that allow us to use all alternative delivery processes that are available. Of course, the Board has to approve any of those, uh, alternate delivery methods, but we want to have, make sure that our rules cover that in the event that we do bring that to you. Secondly, we have a, um, list of approved specific contracts that we exempt, either from monetary limits, from the method of selection, or from the term of the contract itself. Um, and with that, they either, they come in one of two forms. One is a specific contract. Uh, the other one is a class of contracts. So, IT could be an example, or insurance agent of record could be an example. So, we want to go through that list and make sure that we don't have things we don't need anymore, and also that we add things that we think are necessary. Um, the next part of it is the public contracting officer, as I said earlier, that's Tom, uh, perhaps delegating more authority to managers, so that not every contract decision has to come through him. And so, that would be dependent on the type of the contract and maybe the monetary thresholds as well. And finally, uh, we want to make sure that, in fact, we know we need to probably tune up our protest and appeal processes, so we want to make sure that those are streamlined and we can handle those efficiently and effectively, particularly as the program is starting to get into the heavy, uh, construction period. So, uh, we anticipate bringing those back in April. You'll get these in advance to review, and we can be available to talk to you as, as we run up to that meeting. And with that, I would entertain questions.
I was always presuming there are some entertaining questions.
We can only hope.
Anybody have any questions for Clark on that? Well, okay then. Um, I just would like to thank everybody for being so, um, willing to adapt to our new ways of doing business. And also, just on a personal note, I certainly hoped I would never be presiding over a meeting where we declared a state of emergency, but I feel good that we have all of the best experts and expertise on staff to deal with that. So, thank you to all of you, and thank you for your service. There being no further business from the Board, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.